As the mayor for the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order, ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, Lord, and we ask now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. First in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, one adjustment. We'd like to add under nine D, the Ferguson Water Works North Carolina Meter System of the Year Award that will be presented by end game.
All right, any others? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next on our introduction and special presentations will be the National Leadership Day proclamation. And I'm going to read our proclamation and then I'm going to ask any department heads that are here in addition to the executive team to join me down front for a picture. Town of Clayton proclamation, National Leadership Day. Whereas National Leadership Day reminds us that there is a leader within all of us, it is an annual event that gives us the chance to reflect on the importance of capable leadership within society. And whereas it remains, as whereas it reminds us that we have the capability to lead in a variety of situations and encourages us to take up leadership roles that bring about positive change. And whereas National Leadership Day serves as an opportunity to celebrate our role models, reflect on our untapped potential and determine how we can improve our leadership abilities. And whereas leadership lies in one's ability to listen to the people around them, motivate them and change their perspectives. And whereas it is important that each of us develop a willingness to lead when we can because it puts us in a better position to use our talents to improve our communities. And now therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we do hereby proclaim February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, National Leadership Day, proclaim this nineteenth day of February in two thousand and twenty-four. So if all of our town leadership will come forward, that'd be great.
Please squeeze in just a little more.
Town of Clayton proclamation, Government Communications Day. Whereas Government Communications Day was created on February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two and celebrated every year on February twenty-fourth. And whereas it is with acknowledgement and appreciation of the communication experts, public information officers, communication directors, social media managers, videographers, photographers, graphic designers, event planners, speech writers and marketing specialists who inform, educate and engage our communities. Whereas Government Communication Day commends the communicators, public relation professionals and all of those unsung heroes behind the scene who bridge the gap between governance and the governed. Their commitment to clarity, openness and transparency strengthens the foundation of democracy. And whereas it's important to honor these individuals who have dedicated their careers to ensure local, state and federal government agencies have effective, impactful and successful communication strategies to resonate and are relevant. And now therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we do hereby proclaim February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four as Government Communications Day in Clayton and commend its observance to all citizens, proclaim this nineteenth day of February two thousand and twenty-four. I'd like for us to have a nice round of applause for all of our communication specialists with the town of Clayton and then I'm going to ask those of you who are here to join us down front for a photograph. Thank you. Employee Appreciation Day. Whereas the Town of Clayton's citizens are served every day by public servants, the unsung heroes who do the jobs that keep our town working. And whereas public employees make great contributions to their communities by serving in areas such as crime prevention, fire protection, utility service and administration. And whereas the public employees of the Town of Clayton are committed to exhibiting the highest standards of excellence, dedication, creativity and skills. And whereas day in and day out, they provide quality and quantity of diverse services required and expected by the citizens of their local government with efficiency, effectiveness and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity of service would be impossible. And whereas the Town of Clayton recognizes the dedication and talents of public employees as well as the value of their service they render. And now therefore, let it be proclaimed on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we hereby proclaim March first, two thousand and twenty-four be recognized as Employee Appreciation Day, proclaimed this nineteenth day of February twenty twenty-four while in regular session. And let's have a nice round of applause for all of our Town Clayton employees. Okay, thank you. Up next is public hearing, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget, public input. And I will give the floor to Town Manager Rich Capola.
Mr. Mayor, as we've become accustomed to at this time of year, this is the initial public hearing that we typically have in advance of getting the FY twenty-five budget kicked off. This is an opportunity for the public to come give any input with regards to any specific initiatives or spending recommendations they have regarding the FY twenty-five budget. So we are open to any input tonight from our citizens. In addition to that, if folks aren't here, there's always the budget survey that is out currently that they can take advantage of, as well as there'll be an additional public hearing later on in the budget process. I believe it's scheduled for May that that they can come provide additional input once we've had a recommended budget for them. So just looking for any input or any suggestions folks may have.
All right. This has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one wishing to speak. I'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to old business unless there's questions or comments by council.
Okay. Just like I said, communications team has done a pretty, has done a good job putting out the budget engagement surveys. So if anybody's looking forward, if they just go to our website, they should be able to find it pretty quickly.
All right, thank you, sir. Up next under old business is the budget amendments, the water capacity purchase.
So I'll be attending for Mr. Mackay, who's under the weather today. So this is a follow-up to an agreement that you all approved a couple of meetings ago that was going to require some additional, excuse me, additional water capacity purchase from the Johnston County. This represents, if you recall from the system development, the, the general statutes are very specific on how do that, those monies have to be used, they have to be put into a reserve fund and then can be added to the adopted, excuse me, adopted into the operating budget. So this action right here will take $2 million from our reserve account that was recently paid to us to advance or to expand capacity for another entity and we will purchase $2 million of capacity from Johnston County.
All right, any questions or comments for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinances twenty twenty-four dash zero two dash zero two and ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero two dash zero three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of ordinances twenty twenty-four dash zero two dash zero two and ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero two dash zero three. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign and motion carries. Now we'll jump down to staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
It'll be short and sweet tonight. You guys will be hearing a lot from us over the next couple of days. Just reminder that we are having a three-day retreat starting tomorrow, so looking forward to having a lot of great conversation and doing some, some site tours. But other than that, just looking forward to kicking off the budget season.
That's exciting. Thank you, sir. On town attorney? Town clerk?
No report.
All right, other staff? End game?
Good evening, everyone. I'm just really happy to let you all know I attended a professional development training session with Ferguson and since as they're our AMI meter providers. And we were named the Ferguson Meter System of the Year for twenty twenty-four. And last year when they named Landis North Carolina, I was like, okay, we got to figure out how we get this. And they said that, you know, our biggest piece is we're running our system really well. We keep it well maintained. We have reports daily that we look at behind the scenes to see how, how healthy our system is and we do that on a daily basis. They said, secondly, we didn't give up during COVID. They had many customers who stopped the installs during COVID and we did have a discussion about it. And Byron Pullman and myself said, absolutely not, we can't stop this. And I actually think it was one of the best decisions we've made is to move forward with it because I don't think we would be where we are now. So just wanted to make you all aware of this and we're just really excited to have this.
Well, thank you and thank you for accepting that on behalf of Town of Clayton and thank you for all you do for AMI and customer service and all of it. We appreciate you, Ann.
Thank you.
The what? Oh, Ann, can we get a picture? Okay. Yep, anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brandy Conway and I am here today to talk about the organization that I work with. We're a nonprofit organization called Beautiful Broken Vessels. We are expanding from Raleigh into the Clayton and Garner area. What we do is we bring awareness to domestic violence and to toxic relationships and we bring a platform and an organization to help young women and adolescents to recognize those traits and to be able to stop them before they start. We also offer a platform in order for women to be able to discuss these things in a safe environment and to begin to heal from their trauma. We offer two different courses. One is an eight-week course, the other is a six-week course. And they consist of three different modules and they're all focused on self-love, relationships with those around you and relationships with your significant other. We work primarily with churches, schools, colleges, Boys and Girls Club. We currently focus on the age groups of females from the ages of twelve to twenty-seven. However, that age group is not set in stone. If anybody wants to join the conversation classes, we are more than welcome. We are currently working on a course load that includes all genders because unfortunately, as we know, these kinds of things do not only impact women. So if anyone is interested, again, we are expanding out to the area. I do have brochures and I have contact information, so please feel free to stop by.
Awesome. Thank you for coming tonight and sharing that with us. Anyone else? All right, if not, I'll turn it over to council for comments. All right, in hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss a legal matter and to discuss purchasing of real property.
Motion to go in closed session.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
All right, so is there any other business that needs to come before this council? All right, I want to thank everybody for your good work and we look forward to a very healthy and strong retreat over the next three days. All right, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I have a motion and the second. Any further discussion, all in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Good night.